Have we met since the new year? I don't think we have. No, we didn't.
Um, this I know.
Alright, so this is January twenty-one, twenty-twenty Kingston Planning Board. And those folks with us tonight around the table are, from my left Dennis Kuttal is our town engineer, board member and vice chair Peter Coffin, board member Lynn Merrill, select committee rep Phil Coombs, Glenn Koppelman here, to my right Ellen Doctor, our administrative assistant to the board.
That would be good, yeah. Nice call.
And also as alternate to the board. And then board members Chris Bashaw, Peter Beatty, Robin Dugay, and our town planner Glenn Greenwood. So it looks as though we have all of our regular members seated, so Ellen is an alternate but won't be voting tonight. And if Steve Padfield joins us, our other alternate, he won't be voting either, although all of the board members are encouraged to participate in the discussion. Board members, you've probably got the sense that our meeting got significantly shortened by the request of two of our hearing applicants, or two of our applicants who were scheduled for hearings tonight. And the first one for Mr. Falzone at fifty-three Marshall Road, tax map R forty-one, lot seven, is for, there were, there are actually two things on our agenda, but the first one was for a boundary line adjustment, and we have a request to continue that hearing, and I'll read that. It's from the engineer for the applicant Beals and Associates dated January sixteen. And it's addressed to members of the board. It said, "This is written to formally request the subject project applications be continued from the January twenty-one, twenty-twenty Planning Board hearing to February eighteen, twenty-twenty. A new application has been provided with a different design and will be presented at that time." Actually, it, it, the way this reads, it was for the lot line adjustment and the application, but I believe that the application itself, Glenn has been withdrawn and they're reapplying. And that's going to be on the eighteenth, so the only one we need to continue is the lot line adjustment.
Yes.
To February eighteen.
Yes.
So I would accept a motion to that effect?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Chris, second by Peter Coffin. Any discussion on that? Is anyone here in the audience for that hearing? You are.
I, I talked again before Thanksgiving and said, "We are speaking, but it's going to fall on the floor." Eighteenth of February.
Well, what's, well, let me take, let me take the vote on this, and then I'll explain what has happened.
Okay.
Uh, any further discussion then? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extinctions? Alright, so that carries unanimously. So the, the lot line adjustment is continued to the February eighteenth meeting here, and it will be done in conjunction with a revised application for, for that property. The original design was for sort of a horseshoe road with a conservation subdivision approach.
Let me explain what is, what is being proposed.
Okay, the applicant has decided on a different design, and it was significantly different. And in conversation with the town planner, the decision was to just submit a new application.
Is there any further requirement for a notice to go up?
Uh, there will, yes.
There will.
There will. Not for the lot line adjustment, but for the new application, yes. Yep. So if you're in a butter and if you received a notice previously, you'll get another one. But, but it is scheduled for the eighteenth of February, and now we will also do the lot line adjustment at the same time. Thanks. Alright. So the second item on the agenda, as we've already stated, has been, has essentially been withdrawn, and there will be a new application for the project itself, which will also be on February eighteenth. Oops.
Well, that's okay.
Oops.
Easy to find.
Alright, the next hearing was to be for Bresnahan Moving and Storage at seven Marshall Road, tax map R forty-one, lot seven dash two. And this is for a, an amendment to their approved site plan regarding restoration of some overcut areas on the property. And we've, we did have a site walk a couple of weeks back, and I know the applicant is working on some revisions. We also had a couple of, couple of experts in, in their field out with us, and they've provided some written comment as well. But we do have a request from the engineer, Charlie Zilch with S E C and Associates, requesting a continuance for this hearing, and it reads, well, first of all, it was received today, January twenty-one. And it says, "Dear members of the board, please accept this letter as a formal request to continue review of the above amended site plan application to the next available Planning Board hearing date. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Charlie Zilch." So I believe Glenn, you were talking with him and told him that it would probably be February eighteenth?
Yes.
Was he okay with that?
He asked for that one.
He, he asked that it not be earlier than that, because he actually has a block of vacation that he's taking in between the two public areas. Okay.
So then the motion would be to continue this hearing to February eighteenth if the board is so inclined?
So moved.
Okay, a motion by Chris, second by Peter Coffin. Discussion?
I just have a, a question. I'm happy to have online questions for everybody, but it looked like there was quite a bit of conflicting recommendation in the two proposal, or two recommendations from the folks who were at the site walk. So in those instances, is there, I guess, was that everybody else's take on it, or is that just how I read it? Okay.
Yeah, no, it, it, from the, from the recommendations by the two experts who were there, they're significantly different. And so when I read them, one of my comments to Glenn was, "Well, have those two individuals talk, and, you know, could they compare notes and maybe come up with a combined recommendation?" Glenn said that they did talk, it's just that they ended up having different views on it. So, but they are coming, they're, they're coming at it from different points of view. They have different areas of expertise, and so short of them coming up with a unified one, we have the two. And when we, we do hold the hearing, we'll have to discuss them, and the board will, the board will be in a position of having to decide on one or the other, or some combination of the two. Glenn? Uh, by the way, the mics that you usually use, you really don't need to use them, because we've got it set up now so that the mics on the table in the center are now capturing all of our conversations. So as long as you're not just whispering.
So I don't have to lean closer or anything?
No.
I know.
As a result of the, the reports having some significant differences in recommendations, Glenn had asked if I could ask the two environmental specialists to attend tonight's meeting. I did ask them both. Greg Jordan was not able to make tonight's meeting, but Mike had anticipated being here to answer any questions that folks might have. Now, I have not heard back from Greg, but I heard back from Mike about attending the meeting on the eighteen. He is able to do that, so I'll endeavor to close that loop with Greg and see if he's able to attend that meeting as well.
Good.
If they can further explain why they have differences in what their reports say.
Greg's last name?
Jordan.
Thanks, Pete. Did we vote?
No, we had a motion. We voted on the day's motion.
I thought we had a motion.
No, we didn't vote on it.
We had a second.
We had a motion.
Right, but we had a, we didn't, right.
Oh, we were in further discussion and asked the question. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extinctions? So that's unanimous, so that hearing will now be continued to February eighteenth as well. So the February eighteenth agenda will look very much like tonight's agenda.
As you wish.
Yeah, you wish.
Plus.
Both plus.
Yeah, both could be.
Alright. So the next hearing, and which was scheduled to be our last hearing of the evening, is, is it New England or Northeast?
New England.
New England. New England Automation LLC. The address is Four Main Street, it's tax map R twenty-one, lot twenty-two. And the legal notice reads that the applicant is proposing to convert the current use of the property from an existing auto salvage yard to a space for offices, storage, and equipment. So if whoever's representing the applicant can come up to the table here in the front. And if, if, if the folks with you are the applicants, they're certainly welcome to join you at the table.
They are, and they, they said they'd like to stay right there for now.
Did, did you bring an easel, sir?
I did not.
I did not.
I, I made it happen.
Let me, let me check the state.
I can hold it.
Well, but I want to, the meeting is televised.
Okay.
And the, the camera, the camera can, if it's set up in a certain place, can capture it, so people watching on TV can see.
I understand.
We have something here.
Yeah.
Oh.
That's over there.
Okay, are there enough plans around the table that folks can see them? Yep. Alright, sir, if you could, and when you speak, if you could speak up, because that microphone right ahead of you should capture you, okay?
Okay.
Speak clearly and loudly enough.
Okay.
So if you could introduce yourself first, and, and then we'll, we'll ask you to tell us what, what is being proposed.
Okay. My name is Jeff Green, I'm a lands surveyor, I'm here representing Northeast Automation LLC, I mean LLC, I'm sorry. Okay, okay. What we, what we're proposing is to do a site plan at a location on Four Main Street. And people in the town are probably familiar, it's at the far end on the, where the cul-de-sac is before it comes back onto one twenty-five, or what was cut off from one twenty-five. It previously was a auto salvage yard. They want to convert it to a, an office space. Basically, Northeast Automation is a computer-type business where they, they go in and they, they create automatic, automated operating, similar to like the automated bridges and overpass, you know, things that, that take computers now to operate. This, I think it's a Saralong Bridge that had worked on, the new one, you know, the automation for that. So a lot of it is basically engineers in the office working, that's what they're doing. They, there will be some storage for parts that they use in their automation business. And then there's, they want an area out in the back where they can park trucks with some equipment on it in between jobs, to, to go to the jobs, and, and a couple pieces of equipment they use on the job. Other than that, basically what it is, is an office, so currently we have a, a single-story building on the property. It's four thousand five hundred and twenty square feet, and it's currently office and storage space, and they still want to keep it as office and storage space. There's another building, currently it would be considered storage, but it was used as a garage facility at one time. It's got three overhead doors in it, and that's basically gonna, not even necessarily be used a lot, but if anything, it's just gonna be for storage. No repairs or anything onsite anymore. It has its own well, leach field on the site. As you can see on the plan, I showed grades, spot elevation, it's fairly flat, once you go down behind the buildings. There's concrete walls all the way around the property now, the concrete blocks, which kind of outlay where the auto salvage business was at one time. There's been an engineered drainage system that has grease traps and, and such in it, and it was engineered for the previous business, so the, all the drainage goes to one direction, goes into catch bases, cleans, and then outlets back out to, toward what is the omelet area. I proposed parking spaces, nine by eighteen on the front, four spaces and one handicap space. There's, the, the, between the two buildings and the property lines are fenced, gated, and this is, is currently there, proposed to stay there, so that nobody accesses the back of the property without, without the owner knowing it. There's asphalt already on the property, no changes at this time, proposed on that. Some of it is broken asphalt, but it's in the area away from the office and the area that's going to be used for the majority of the park. There is some existing landscaped area, there's a, there's mailboxes, a utility pole, a utility pole with lights on it, as well as a existing sign. The existing sign is planned to be utilized the way it is right now. No changes other than what it says on it. Size will stay the same, it may even be smaller, or utilized a little bit smaller. Beyond that, we have done, if you want me to get into all of it, I can tell you a little bit about the lot coverage calculations, or if you'd like to hear about that, or if you...
Yeah, probably, probably good if you could go through as much of that as you can tell us now.
Okay.
Because, because if you don't, we'll end up asking you about it anyway.
Right. So, so I, I haven't been before this board before, so I want to make sure I'm doing it the way, the way that works best to you. So just keep me in line and I'll work with you.
And just, just so you know, I, I see a couple of faces in the audience who are on the opposite side of the room, and maybe they are here for, as a butters or as interested parties to the application. This is a public hearing, and so after the applicant makes the proposal, and the board has a chance to have some conversation, there will come a time in the meeting that I'll open it up for public comment, and I'll state it that way. And at that point, anyone in the audience who is in a butter or an interested party will have an opportunity to ask questions or speak as you wish, so, so you will have your chance if, if you want to do so. So, Mr. Green?
So, so one thing that I wanted to, to bring up is during this application is the, the owner of the property has changed hands. When we applied, there was an owner and an applicant, the applicant is still the same, the applicant is now the owner. Okay, so it had, had a closing on the property. So, so the one note on here that, you know, for the, for the deed is, is now changed to the new owner. So going forward, it's the owner, the applicant are all the same. And basically, the, the property is six point eight, eight acres, two hundred ninety-nine thousand eight hundred and sixty square feet. I have put in a, a couple of waivers, which would be, as you know, there's two sheets to the plan. One is just an overview of the entire property. The first sheet shows exactly what we're doing on the property. The rest of it is wooded land that hasn't been used for many years, and no intention of doing anything in that property, so nothing would change on that. So, so the entire property is six point eight, eight acres. We went through, there was, there's been applications, I think, before the board for this property, or talks, maybe even, didn't even get to the board, but there's been some to the zoning. And because of that, they had asked for environmental analysis done on the property, and phase one and a phase two have been completed on this property because of creative issues, and it was done prior to us applying. The existing sign on the property is ten foot by four foot and twelve feet high, and forty, forty square feet per side, as it is currently right now. There's no lights on the sign, and don't intend to put any on the sign. There is lighting on the pole that faces the building and goes down, existing there, we're planning on leaving that there. The other lighting on the building, it's got a four-foot overhang on the front of the building all the way across, and it's got recessed lighting across the front, and those are to light the front, in front of the office spaces, and that's also intended to stay that way. The, the property is not in a flood zone, we do have a wetland, the wetland's been delineated. And, and like I said, the, the, all the flow, all the drainage goes down toward that area and goes through a cleaning system before it's outletted into the, into the one wetland area on the property. The, the office space is being designed for four employees at this time, space of storage of equipment, on trailers, a little storage in the buildings. So I laid out, it's a gravel parking in the back, so we're not really intending to pave it or, or line it, but I showed an area in the back corner where, approximate area where they would be parking, track the trailers as they come in with the equipment on it before they go back out again. The, the proposed hours of operation, seven to five Monday to Friday, and seven to four on Saturdays. And again, those are hours, I put hours on it for, for it open, but he doesn't really have a customer base that comes to the office. I mean, everything he does is pretty much over the computers and phones and that type of stuff, or if they go out onsite. Matter of fact, he, he was saying that, and we can clarify if you need to, but one person is there most of the time. A lot of the others are working onsite while the sites are being developed and put together, the automation is being put in, so the workers are there, but there is a potential of up to four employees at any one time.
So it's not a retail type?
No, it's, it's a, it's almost, almost considered a private business where you're in there working, and you're taking calls, and you're doing emails, and you're going out onsite, but very little, if any, would ever come to the offices itself, so.
Are there any operations listed on the plan?
There are.
There are?
Yes, yes. So impervious area, I did a calculation based on what is existing now and what is there. So there's pavement, gravel, and structures. And everybody looked at things a little bit different. Pavement is an impervious surface. Gravel is, in my opinion, an impervious, an impervious surface also, because it has been compacted. It does have recycled asphalt on it, so it would definitely be, in my opinion, a hundred percent impervious. And then, and then, and then the structures, of course. So there's twelve thousand four hundred and thirty-six square feet of pavement currently on the property, and, and that is all in the front area of the property along the road. There's sixty-two thousand square feet of, of compacted gravel area in the back of the property that's utilized for the accesses to the back, as well as the, the large parking area that's back there. There's six thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight square feet of structure space, and that includes the overhang on the fronts of the buildings, as well as, it comes to a total eighty-one thousand four hundred and fourteen square feet. Total site area is two hundred ninety-nine thousand eight hundred and sixty, and that gives it a twenty-seven percent coverage. And then that is, and when you look at the sheet one, it looks like, wow, we're covering everything, but half of the property is on sheet two, as the remaining land on the back of the property. Okay, so it is all up near the road. I think, I think that's what I have to present before the board.
Okay. Well, I'm sure we'll get into some questions. One that, just so that you know, the board did a fairly extensive site walk on the property back when the person, business that I believe these folks bought it from.
Yeah.
Mr. Dudan?
Dudan, yes.
He was proposing some, some use of that property, and so we had a, we had a site walk, we did it with the, he did it with the select board, I believe, as well. So it was fairly, fairly, fairly comprehensive site walk.
Okay.
So I think the board is familiar with the property. And one of the things that we did look at was that, that catchment system with the traps and the...
Right.
And I'm not sure that we ever ver, we ever got verification that it was functioning properly. Do you know what it is?
I was told it was. I've been trying to get in contact with the engineer that designed it to have it reviewed, and I haven't got that accomplished at this point.
At, at some point, you know, as you go along here, I, I think the town is going to want to know that, because it's sensitive and open area, it's got wetlands close by, that, that catchment system drains into...
Right.
Pond next door, so, you know, that, that system had a very specific purpose, and...
Right.
Hopefully it would be functioning and, and it would do its job.
Yeah, yeah. From, from what, and I'm not an engineer, so, but from what I can see, and, and, and all the work that I've done before, it's functioning, but I do not have somebody who can label it as such, just my, my experience.
Might, might want that, put that on your list, please, to, to do. Okay, we, we, you did...
Just a real quick question that he had for me was, he wanted, he says, whether it's functioning or not doesn't matter. It does matter, because you still want to protect the wetlands, but it isn't, it isn't, it, if we were to do it over, that system probably wouldn't be necessary...
Right.
To, for the use that's there, but because it's there, you're asking, is it functioning?
Right, plus as we get into some of the discussion, I mean, you're going to have vehicles there, and there's going to be runoff, and, you know, that, that whole, that thing is supposed to be catching whatever goes down, down through that area, and might include some volatiles or some petroleum, and that's what the traps are for. Granted, it's a different use, it's not an automotive use, but...
Right, but there's still the use.
And there's still the protection of the, of the resource in your bodies.
Right, exactly.
We do have copies of your waivers, and so we, we can take them up at the appropriate time. The other thing that the board needs to consider is invoking jurisdiction, so that we start the sixty-five day clock, which is the amount of time that the state law gives us to, to work with you and to, to review and to render a decision.
Right.
So, but before we do that, both of our, both our town planner and our town engineer have provided written comments. Hopefully you got copies of those tonight. Okay, we just got them ourselves, so.
Thank you.
You can follow along, because I, we're going to ask both of them to review their comments for us.
Okay.
Glenn, do you have comments for the, for Mr. Green?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Dennis, would you like to, oh, do we have two Dennis's? No, we have, no, we don't. Dennis, would you, would you like to start?
Sure. So, I got the copies of the plans January 9th and a copy of the narrative that Mr. Green submitted also. And so, my comments are as follows. The sheet for recording should comply with the registry of deeds. I noticed there's some colors on there, and I don't know, Mr. Green, you might have to check in the registry of deeds if you're not familiar with Rocket Dam, they're pretty fussy about that.
They're very, they're very fussy, yes.
Okay, so that and, and like, second sheet, if that's going to be recorded, the text is pretty small, so I want to check on that. Article 202, building setbacks from wetlands must be shown with justification according to Table A, that's part of the zoning, and it's a function and value analysis of the wetlands. And it'd be nice to know what that buffer is around the wetland area to be able to show that on the plan. 904-5G8, permanent benchmark, USGS required. G22, why was my show, drainage plan in accordance with the stormwater management. Section 908, that's what G22 was. G24, building type and location of entrances should be provided. Also, G25 requires showing the elevation view of the building. I assume that could be like a photograph, that's probably something you could provide for the file.
So, they, they are part of the application?
Yes.
Photographs?
It's part of 904-5G25, which is in the
Right, what I've said, I've submitted photos with the application of the buildings?
Oh, you did?
Yes.
Okay.
There's like three pages of them.
Okay, well, that's fine. If you got them, then that's fine.
Okay. If that works.
Good, great. Yeah, no, that's good. Just, again, some of my comments, we just ignore it
Okay.
If you'd like. Another question, are buildings heated with gas or oil, and the location of these containers should be shown in the plan? Just a question that I had. Section 904-5G28, water supply well is provided, show the proper well protective zone around the well. Sewer disposal area is shown. Since the system is a fairly old system, I recommend that inspection report be provided to verify its proper function. 904-5G32, proposed landscaping, details are provided but not shown where they will be planted except for the northeast buffer. The buffer zone, 904-6D, the proposed fences proposal on the rear of the property and rule of the required 50-foot vegetated buffer. The type and height of the fence must be provided. Is this an accept, is this acceptable to the board? Any about us, should additional buffer be shown on the east block line? Question that I have. 904-6E2E, show details for the solid waste container labeled as a dumpster. 904-6H, and 904-14, the planning board may wish to see additional parking scheme for vehicles parked on the site. The design should allow emergency piling to help buildings through the property. Section 904-6H, 47B1, additional parking must be on pavement, show a cross-section detail which would match the town requirements for parking area. 904-6J, requirements from the fire department must be addressed. 907383, performance guarantee allowed to be finalized prior to approval. And 4A, the performance guarantee must be in place prior to construction of the site. 908, stormwater management, appears that the surface drainage for the majority of the parking gravel area behind the building close to one catch basin. Details of the structure, outlet location, velocity, and treatment control must be provided. Plans and supplemental data must apply with 90811, and I think that, and 908166 talks about not only mentioning the stormwater requirements like Glenn just talked about, but also those type of best management practices require inspection periodically. And if you look at the regulations, inspection, regulations needs to be done to make sure they're functioning. And since it's existing, I know sometimes it's hard to find out what actually is in there without digging it up, but I don't think the board expects you to dig it up to find out what's there, but if you can find out, if I can find out who put it in, if they have any type of plan or sketch or something like that that shows what there is there, and expecting it as best you can, come up with some sort of a sketch would certainly be helpful. So, I don't think the board wants you to dig it up to find out what's there, but just
Right.
More information to find out what's there and how the runoff is being treated would be important.
Dennis, one question, would the board have a copy of all prior inspections on that site, seeing how it is required?
I don't believe so.
So, do we have any inspections there at all?
I don't believe so.
Why would we have any inspections?
It's supposed to be done on a regular basis, but I don't know if we have any.
If I may, I believe it's a fairly new system, so it wasn't really in operation for a long time before everything kind of closed down anyway, so that can be looked into.
I think the concern, my real concern is the buffers of them that goes around the wetland and, and incorporating some sort of protection around that is, you've got concrete blocks that go fairly close to where the wetland is, and if there's a setback that should be maintained, there might maybe need some sort of delineation as far as what the setback is, so no vehicles get close to that area.
Okay.
And it might help out as far as further stormwater management as well.
Right.
But if you have any questions, let me know. That's about all I have for that.
Thanks, Dennis. Glenn?
Sure. I am taking my comments that it is the first public hearing, so we need to delineate open I have that a temporary benchmark needs to be shown on the plan. This needs to be tied to USGS data. The plan needs to include that the property is located in the October Protection District. A single snow storage area is detailed on the plan, but it is 200 feet behind the building, so it seems like a long distance to move snow from the front parking areas. Are any snow storage areas anticipated in the front portion of the site? Does this proposal comply with the town's stormwater management requirements? That's always a question of mine because I leave that to Dennis. I likewise didn't notice in the application that photographs have been provided, so I asked for them. So, that can be disregarded. Is the dumpster enclosed by fencing? Regulations require that, require this, but the plan doesn't display it. The existing wastewater disposal system location, I say needs to be detailed on the plan. It is, it is shown on the plan. What I really got to say is that if you have any additional information about its location, that would be helpful, because it's really just a general location behind the building. And any, if they, if they know the design number, or if they've looked in the selectman's office for copies of that design, that information would be helpful. The trailer parking area in the back section of the site, I, I have in my comments that it needs to be on paved surface. I guess as I look at this, what they were doing was having a location where they have the box sections of trailers sitting there, but the, the actual vehicle that toes those aren't there. I'm not sure that we require that that be on pavement, because there's not any issue with engine leaking or whatever.
Probably, probably only if, if a motorized
Trailer is there, but if
Like the tractor that goes with the trailer.
Exactly, exactly. So, I guess that's just something we should, we should talk with the, with the outfit to make sure we understand exactly how that parking is going to be utilized. And then I said that I expect that anyone who doesn't want to take another site walk, that was probably presumptuous, but I think it's probably the case. If it's not, we should take the opportunity to set one.
Before this hearing is up tonight, we'll, we'll decide if we want to go tractor it Okay, thanks, Glenn. Mr. Green, I know you, you've got copies now and you're making notes and
Yes.
So, maybe once we circle back with you, if you have responses to some of these,
Yep.
The board would probably appreciate that.
Okay.
And then, ones that there aren't answers to, we could get the board of them. We do have comments from town departments because one of the reasons that we ask for multiple copies when you do the submittal is so that they can be distributed to different departments for, for their review and comment. Turns out that we got three of them back, and there are no comments on any of them. So, the health department has no comment, the building inspector has no comment, and the highway department has no comment. We didn't receive one from fire department, though. We don't know why, but although we have had a switch in, our, our longtime chief retired and there's a new fire chief in place, and organizationally, I, I don't know, maybe these are being handled differently.
Might have been a trace or similar situation.
Yeah, could be. Normally, we do get a response from fire, but you might want to make a note that at some point, you might want to reach out to them just to see if they have any questions or any issues.
Yeah, that was actually on one of the, number 12 from the engineer.
Totally, okay.
Gwendolyn, was that it?
Yes.
Mr. Gwendolyn. Spoke of that also, so if there's any, so I, I can definitely do that and make sure that we get some comments back from them.
Or does, does the, normally at this point, we would, we would open it up to the board for questions and discussion, and we could do that. However, if, if the board is ready to discuss the jurisdictional question, we could do that.
Can I just ask one clarifying question? So, the fence along the rear of the property, is that proposed or existing?
On the, on the north side of the property?
Yeah, I'm referencing number eight, but I
Yeah, it's, it's proposed.
It's proposed.
Yeah, so at this point, that area that she's speaking about has existing concrete blocks, you know, the, the large blocks, two rows high, and then it's got a little bit of wooded area there, but if you look through, there's a residential property starts back in that area, so we're proposing to put, and I didn't, I should have, I had to, probably a six-foot-high fence like it was before, on top of that area, so it'd be, you know
So, removing the concrete?
No, leaving the concrete, because that's a barrier to the wetlands also, and it's a, it's a natural berm of dirt behind there, because the blocks are in, in the, up against a bank of dirt, okay? Retaining, okay? So, it's, it's actually there, and so the fence would be on top of that to prevent any, any noise or, or, you know, anything going beyond that towards the residential area. So, it is a proposed wooden fence.
Like a stockade fence?
Like a stockade fence, yes.
Six-foot?
It, it would be a six-foot, yes. So, I can detail that.
That, that should be detailed on the
Yes.
Other, other, other burning questions?
I have one question, just because it may affect the 65-day decree. You talked about the Phase One, Phase Two environmental studies. Are that something that happened just before you purchased it? Or is that talking about the ones that were done?
It was, it was done in between purchases a couple, a couple times ago within, well, I don't know exactly the time period of it. There is record of that in the town
Right. Reason I say that is we, we had a couple of applications ago on this property. We had, it mentioned that in past Phase One, Phase Two, and then we found about copies. It turned out that the Phase One had recommended further investigation.
Right.
That it wasn't completely, and that we had recommended a second phase, and that involved testing tests and things like that. And the second, the last applicant came forward, withdrew their application, but they, they were going to be required to continue on what the selectman already
Right.
Required, and that was that the, these phases be completed and the test bits be done.
Yeah.
Basically, it covered to on what would be the existing conditions
Right.
And whether it needs to be mitigated or not. So, my question is, if those departments haven't been met, if you haven't had something done within your time when we were purchasing it, or prior to your purchasing it, if it's done for you, you may want to find out how long it's going to take before we, to get those departments met.
Maybe we can ask the question, they, when we reviewed the property prior, there was a Phase One, the Phase One recommended Phase Two, as Peter said. To the best of my knowledge, it never got to the point of doing Phase Two, and I don't know if in fact it has.
Right.
And you know if it has?
I'll have to verify it a little bit more, but Mr. Dudak, the previous owner, told me that it had gone to the Phase Two, that he had it done, and he gave me the engineer's name that was working on it.
It's been submitted, it was submitted to the board's line. I, I received it from a seal, a couple of weeks ago. She's had it for quite some time.
Question, answer.
Yeah, she, she got it quite a while.
And were there any significant recommendations that came out?
No, I looked, I looked at it really briefly. I have, I looked at it really briefly. It seemed to me that they had done what had been requested of them, and there, there wasn't any, the information found in the Phase Two didn't warrant any additional study.
Okay.
More importantly, we don't have to worry about it taking, you know, two months to get it.
Correct, correct.
If it's been done, which is the question I had.
I, I can send that, I can send that around. I actually thought about printing it this afternoon and then thought, I don't really know if they'll ask about it.
And that's fine for any member that wants to see it, but I think we also want to make sure that a copy of that gets put into the file for this
Yep.
For this project, so that it's there in case
I think I may have sent that along electronically to Ellen after I got it from Susan.
Okay. So, I'm, I'm fine.
Well, I, other questions? Anything sort of immediate or things that popped out as a result of initial discussion? But motions? I'll second that. Motion by, you guys are the team tonight.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Keep it rolling.
Motion by Chris.
Doing such a good job.
Second by Peter Kaufman. To consider this plan complete enough for further consideration, which means we invoke jurisdiction if the board was in favor of that discussion. All in favor of the motion, say un.
I, I
Unposed, abstentions? So, that's unanimous, okay. So, 65 days from now is the, is the, is the time window that we're, that we're working with. Certainly, if we can do it before that time, we will, but that's the, that's the amount of time that the process gives us. Well, now
Public comment for yours.
We, we can, we can. Just, just to alert the board, there are two other requests coming up.
Did the minutes of the paper get copied?
Probably not.
They weren't copied.
Gentlemen back there and gentlemen here, are you both here as, as interested parties in this application?
We're here.
Okay.
Right.
All right, excellent.
Did you want to see
And the young lady back there, you're with the
Yeah, I'm with the
Got it.
Did you want to see a copy of the sign?
Well, Chris has suggested that we do public comment now, and so why don't we do that? We'll open this for public comment if either gentleman would like to ask a question or make a comment. If you do, I'm going to ask you to come up to the table where Mr. Green is sitting. You can, you can sit right beside him there, and you'll need to speak clearly so that that mic captures your voice, and the first thing I'm going to ask you to state is your name and your address, please.
Mark, Mark Delaney, 6 Main Street. This is my concern, like I might fence on one side.
Hold it, hold it just a second.
You did this last time.
What, your timing, is it, your
You get used to it. I know. All right. We all set? All set?
Yes.
All right, I have a fence on one side of it that I would like access to it, if it's possible to fix and repair. I have to repair one side of the fence.
Is it your fence or their fence?
No, it's my, it's yours. Right, I'd like to have access on that side.
Is it right on the lot line?
It's right on your property.
It's right on my property.
So in order to paint it, for instance?
Well, it's fine, it's plastic, but I have to replace the panel. Yes.
Okay.
Why you want to fix it?
I was going to, actually.
You want?
I was going to.
But yeah, that is my fence, and it was put there before by the other previous owner.
Previous owner of your property?
No, the previous owner put it up to me because my fence fell down, my other wooden fence, so he said, yeah, I'll put the other fence. So...
Doesn't the plan show space, ample space between the fence and the property?
I haven't seen it.
Yes, it's right here.
It appears to.
It appears to, so I think you already have that.
Huh?
It does, so is it all right if I come back?
Because I don't know, I don't know where...
So in front of the building, you're here, Delaney, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is where the fence is?
Yeah.
The property line is this blue line here.
Oh, okay. See, I didn't know the property.
So there is area for you to work on your fence, and that was probably put that way for that purpose.
Yeah, okay.
The only thing that he may require is, because we have gated all the way to his fence, that access to get into the back reasonably would be, you know, something that they could work together on.
Yeah, we do, I do get around anyway.
Yeah. But there is, and I can put a distance on that.
Oh, five or six feet.
Whenever you do it, it's like five or six feet exactly.
Yeah, that's fine, and you know, I was concerned about the hours, but, you know, that's fine. And also the traffic to, you know, I'm just concerned because I get vehicles down in the apartment building, the fire down the street, and it's just concerning. So that was really my concern, to see, you know, what are you going to keep out there for vehicles in the back? Because last year, you know, last previous owner, I saw a backhoe, I saw a dump truck, sorry, so a whole bunch of stuff that I just don't like looking at. I hope you...
So what we'll do, you would address your questions to the chair, which you're doing, and we will ask the applicant or the applicant's engineer to respond to those questions. So you're concerned about, or you want to know more about traffic?
I just want, I want to know more about the traffic.
And then about storage.
What's being stored back there?
Out there.
Um, whether, because I know the previous owner in the backhoe, you know, cars and everything, but I understood that part. But he had, you know, trailers back there. I just don't want to see if I can, but I'm going to from my window.
Sure.
And, but, you know, I just want minimal quiet as I as we can, as we can. And still have the business there, if they, you know, still have the business there, it's fine, but I just want to kind of keep it as quiet on Sunday afternoons as I can. And not have, you know, just people flying down the street, oh, I got to go to work on a Sunday, you know? You know, I don't, I'm...
Okay, let's give the applicant a chance to address those questions and see if we can get some answers. You're welcome to sit there if you want, but I'm going to ask Mr. Green or the owner to respond to the questions.
Well, I can start with that. We talked about the amount of employees and stuff previously a little bit. There's no more than four employees. But most of those employees work off-site when they're doing their work and don't come in here, and when they do, it's only, you know, occasionally, you know, once, every once in a while, no real time. So there's one employee, one car, that's going to be coming in and out most of the time, you know, on any type of daily type of thing. And then the trucks that they were talking about, we were talking about four trailers being packed out back, so when they get the automation equipment, it comes in on a trailer, and then when they need it, it goes back out. Right, so...
So you'd be firing, you'd be firing?
Mr. Green?
Yes.
If, I don't know the gentleman's name, but if he's going to be speaking, he needs to come up. We need to capture his name, and his voice isn't being captured on the mic, I'm sorry.
One minute, just so we can get this part straightened out.
If you could state your name, please.
Yep, Hicham Ziguiar. H.I.C.H.A.M.? Thank you. M.Z.I.G.U.I.R. Regarding the equipment, it will be parked furthest away from the building toward the trees. So there'll be about four trailers max there, the pumps, there's no trucks attached to the truck. That's a real question earlier, bring them over and park them when they need it.
So you're parking down this the avenue down the main street?
Yeah, that's where that came on. So this is your, this is your house here? Here, it'll be parked on this side away from the water.
Okay.
So...
It's kind of behind the building?
Yeah, the buildings are here. The buildings are on this side. They'll be parked all the way over here.
Okay. And what about your dumpster? You're going to have a trash guy come down, pick up all your trash.
Yeah.
Is that dumpster going to be in the backyard, or is it going to be in the front yard? Because we know previously they had the dumpster in the front yard, so they could get it.
Oh, okay.
Now, are they going to be able to get in the backyard? The disposal is recyclable?
Honestly, I have not thought of that, but I was thinking something along the line of be behind a big garage, actually. So what are the, wanted to clarify a little bit. I had put in a proposed dumpster location and put it near the office because that's where the business is going to operate. But that does also put it next to Mr. Delaney's property, okay? And because he has concerns, we're, he's mentioning that maybe we should put that down at the other end also, so it won't be a problem. The, and then back to the trailers, you was talking about the four trailers that come in, they're going to come in, drop off the trailers and leave, and then when it's time for the equipment to be used, they're going to come back and get that. And that entrance is also the furthest away from Mr. Delaney's property.
Right.
You're here, the access would be here, and if we renegotiated, relocated the dumpster down into that same area, it would be the same access for them also, which would be the furthest away from any other residential.
So on this dump, on this part here, there is a gate down this way, this room, okay? Now, you're going to have the dumpster outside the gate or inside?
It'll be inside. In the summer, in the summer, the gates will actually, will be exchanged in for a roller gate today.
Okay. What point in one between the buildings? Is that going to be access? My other concern too is fire too. Are you going to, so you have something in the back? Are you going to get them in the back, a roller gate? Or are you going to intercept them?
That's one of the things that the fire department will comment on when Mr. Green makes contact with them, and it was brought up by either Glenn or Dennis, the establishment of Fire Lands for fire protection purposes.
So what will happen from here is I will be making contact with the fire chief, like we talked about. And a lot of times on a property like this, the recommendation is putting in what they call a Knox box. I'm sure you're all familiar with that. And this might be a perfect location for one of those so that they can access through the gates. Which is a key box that they would give it.
Yeah, there's a...
Yeah, okay, and that may be what we ask the fire chief about, and get his opinion on that, where he'd like to put it, that type of thing, so. One thing about it, one thing about it, if the buildings were in fire, the fire department's probably not going to go between the buildings. But it is possible to go around, you know, in the fire and opposite, but chances are, they're probably going to want access to the back, but not necessarily to drive their trucks through between buildings, burning buildings. So, but we can, we'll discuss that with them, and we'll have some options.
I mean, the other, the other light green fences on my side connected to the other fence, is that going to be solid? I mean, is that going to stay solid?
That'll stay solid, but there is a gate there, and the gate will remain for the same purpose for fire access around the office building. So his question again is, the, there's a small fence that goes from our building over to his fence. There is a gate there, a small gate, and that gate would definitely remain for the purpose of fire also, because that would give you access around the office building. So I think we wouldn't replace it with a solid. It is a solid wood fence, but yeah, but it will have a gate there.
And it would not be stored up in that area correctly?
It won't be an entrance?
No, that's what, that was another, another reason why that's not stored. That's what I, that's what I actually don't want.
Yeah, Mr. Delaney, I need to ask you to, Drew, you need to speak this way.
Oh, I'm sorry.
For two reasons. One is that the questions need to come here so that there isn't a conversation with you and the applicant directly.
Okay.
It's just decorum, it's the way things are done. And also, if you speak this way, the microphones will capture your voice, and otherwise, it's garbled.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No problem.
No, I think that's all my, that all I'm concerned about is just...
Well, I do want them to address, though, the traffic issue. You had questioned that.
Yeah.
Traffic coming and going up and down Main Street.
Correct.
So maybe if you gentlemen could address how much traffic comes and goes in a day, for instance?
Yeah, that's what we had mentioned before. There's only one employee at the building, so there's really only the one car here every day. So he is basically at the office, the other gentleman, the other people that employ, don't come there every day, they go to the job, and they go maybe every other week type thing, every three weeks, they come in. So there's really going to be one car in and one car out a day, for the most part, other than maybe going to lunch. And then the trucks, like you said, those can come in for, they come in and deliver and then leave, and then, again, that's every month at some point. So it's not a lot of truck traffic and very little car traffic that's going to be generated with this business on a solid, everyday type thing.
It sounds like the way you're proposing it, it's probably less than what it was with the previous.
My car, yeah.
Yeah, and now, are the trucks, one of them they're delivering, are they delivering from seven to five, they go from seven to four on Saturday?
The question is, are the truck deliveries going to happen during business hours?
Yeah, during the week.
During your stated business hours?
Yes, because I don't want them at night because I've had that happen. No, I've had that happen before every night, and I had sitting over there by the open.
Well, and that's when they were, again, the previous business was delivering cars and...
Right, that's what I don't want to happen. That's all I'm really concerned about.
Yeah, we have control over when the deliveries happen, make sure they're there during the day, so I'm there to inspect if the delivery comes in. Midday, during the workdays, Monday to Friday, there won't be any delivery on Saturdays. And we did post hours, we did put hours on the plan, seven to five, Monday through Friday, and seven to four on Saturday, to cover the traffic that would be there. But we can even put no deliveries on Saturday if that was a boy's concern. It was actually partially needed, told him that he probably should have some Saturday hours, just so that if he does come in on a Saturday to work, that he's covered. But it isn't really open, like we said, it's not open to the public, it's just when he's going to be at the office, when the office is open.
Yeah, when you, you know, when you propose hours, you're better off proposing even what you might anticipate, if it happens to be...
That's kind of what this is.
Expand into the future, you know, if you might need some extra hours like on a Saturday, even if you don't use them now.
Right.
Because once you start making changes like that, you need to come back here for amendment site plans, so you're better off proposing what you really need and having your approval for what then.
Right. In terms of traffic, it'll be the same amount of traffic that it's been the last two or three weeks since we acquired the property, so. My truck outside. If you see more than two people, we have a problem.
You'll call the police at that point.
I'll say everything, I'll answer my questions.
And you mentioned the previous owner had a backhoe. I do have one in there right now, and that's mainly just for the snow. And when we were uploading the equipment to the storage, but there will be a backhoe there. That we can park wherever that suits you.
No, I understand, no, no problem. I just want, I just want to know what's there. I just want to know what's there. That's all I really want to know, and I'm trying to beat you down or anything. No, no, no. That's all I need to know.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And the other gentleman, would you like to come up, sir?
Good evening.
And your name and address?
My name is Dan Lloyd, and I live at 21 Winslow Drive. And that's going to be the clutter that shares the longest lot line with the owner applicant.
We have Jean Fournier.
That's my dear wife.
Lovely, lovely.
What would your concerns or questions be?
I don't think I have many concerns whatsoever. I come here to make a simple couple of comments. I dropped by on my own two weeks ago, last Saturday, to introduce myself to the owner applicant. Showed him where I live. Told him how long I lived there.
This gentleman?
That's correct. Since 1992. And my feeling was that the owner applicant displayed a sincere and genuine sense of neighborly attitude towards me, we exchanged phone numbers. They expressed transparency in what he wanted to do, and wanted to address any of my concerns that I may not have. And if I did, to reach out, touch bases with him. And I bring this to the board only because the previous owners since 1992, they've never done that. And I think Kingston needs good neighbors like that. You know, people that want to do the right thing at the right time. So that's my, that's what I'm saying. I think the gentleman has a good business model, from what I can understand. He wants to do the right thing on that property. And since 1992, I can't think of a better thing that's happened at that property. Okay, we've had fair shares of used car lots, auto resalvage operations, all of these things that threaten the pond next to me in the groundwater. This seems like a pretty low-impact operation in my estimation, for whatever that means.
Certainly compared to what has been there.
There he goes. So that's all I have to do to address the board, and I thank you for the opportunity alone to express my thoughts and opinions.
Thank you for coming out and for expressing those and for the positive comments. Very good. Sounds like he's got a good neighbor too.
I have my dates.
We all do. I don't see anybody else, but I, for the record, I would just ask if there's any further public comment. There being none, then we'll close the public comment section and we'll bring it back to the board. We do have a couple of waiver requests, maybe we can, is Chris coming back?
Soonie, we'll pay a paperwork file.
Okay. Maybe I'll wait. If the board has other questions, maybe we can deal with that now, but wait until he gets back to deal with the waivers.
I have one for Glenn. Since the dumpster is going to be within the fenced area, that kind of would be point number six.
We generally ask that dumpsters be enclosed wherever they are on site. Because it means that if for some reason someone leaves a lid up, you have a better chance that everything that's there stays there. It doesn't get blown all over the place and end up on someone else's property, whether or not there's a fence. So it's certainly something that can be discussed, but generally, we do prefer that the enclosure themselves exists.
Dennis? So it seems like a pretty low-profile business, and basically one person there most of the time. There's a pretty good-sized building, 4,000 square feet for one person. I kind of wonder if, I know this application is for what you intend to use now, but there could be times when somebody like me needs an office space. And I come to you and say, maybe I'd like to rent some space from you, because you've got plenty of space. maybe I'd like to rent some space from you, because you've got plenty of space. So just something to think about if you're thinking of possibly doing something like that, to show a few more parking spaces now. That might help you in the future to get approval for now, because if you only have four or five parking spaces now, and it's a possibility of something like that coming to you and saying, I'd like to rent some space from you, still a low-profile business and whatever. So whatever you show on the plan now that you could utilize in the future, wouldn't have to come back to the planning board. So just something that you think about in your revision to this plan. Not that you'll have anybody in the future, but a few more parking spaces that way there. If it does, the opportunity does come up, you come back and you talk to Glenn and say, Glenn, I got a rubber tube deal for somebody like me. Come in and rent your spot, and have a couple more cars there on a low-profile basis. Maybe Glenn will look at it and say, you don't have to come back to the planning board. Maybe he will say, you will have to, but depending on the particular use. Just saying, just something to think about in revising your plan, because it's a pretty good-sized building, and you might have that type of an opportunity come up.
Do you have expectations of using all the square footage for your business?
Uh, no.
So Dennis's comment might be something to think about.
Yeah, just consider it, that's all, you know? And if it's on the plan now, you don't have to come back to the planning board if something happens.
Unless, like Dennis said, if that did happen, depending on the use that was coming in, it might require coming back. But again, conversation with Glenn could help you make that decision.
And the other thing is, is maybe talk to Glenn too, to see whatever you put on the plan, that may or may not happen, that what would not trigger coming back to the planning board.
We can certainly have that discussion, yeah. I've spoken with him. I've got, you, the guy at the back is right, he's been a pleasure to talk with anytime, indirectly, as has his significant other.
I mean, I just make that comment because it just prevents you from having to come back again, and notify about it, and go through this whole process again, so. It's a nice building, it's a nice project, site, and it's good use for it, and I'm also happy to say that.
Looking for an opposite reason. Question I have, you did indicate, Mr. Green, that wetlands were delineated on the property.
Yes.
I'm assuming a wetland scientist did it?
Yes.
And Glenn, do we have a stamp for that?
So, so, little small explanation. Basically, what happened is, I've been working with a soil scientist, wetland scientist, septic designer, and in the process of working on this project and 16 others, he decided to retire and give up his wetland license. Okay, so, so, but it worked out that the gentleman that used to work for him is now going to, so I can now safely put that guy's stamp on the plan, and he, as of this week, he was out there to redo what the first guy did. So it has been redone by a new scientist, and now we can put it on there. So I had to leave the stamp off because I found out that his stamp had expired, even though he had looked at it for me, it was in between.
Oh, sure, and that's fine.
So that's my explanation.
Oftentimes, oftentimes, the stamps don't appear on some of the initial plans with the, because it costs money every time you have to put the stamp on.
It's actually on that one right there, so that I could show you that it has been done, so as of today.
By the time the final mylar comes?
Yes. Right.
So you can do the functional analysis until we go back and press that back into the file?
Yes, you can do that all for me now.
How about we do the waiver request? And I believe there are two. Oh, and just for the, just for the record, there is an authorization by the applicant to, authorizing Mr. Green to, oops, authorizing Mr. Green to act on his behalf, so it's covered there. Waiver request number one is, and this is from Mr. Green, I would like to request a waiver of item number 11B2 on the site plan checklist, wetlands delineation. We are requesting a waiver on the back portion of the subject lot as there will be no new development in that area.
Do we need to define which area we're talking about waiver, because we don't wanna wave the, put it right around the pond, but where this, this whole area on the second page of this vacant land, wooded?
Maybe Mr. Green can describe for us, which are we referring to, that is like the waiver to.
Okay, yeah. If, my waiver request, and I didn't actually put it on the plan, but there's a soil division line that is at the back, and it's beyond the tree line, and that would basically be the end of the wetlands delineation. So everything from the road back to that soil division line would be wetlands delineated and signed, which is basically sheet one. And then the remaining, the vacant land, the wooded area from that line back would be what the waiver would cover. And we could put a note on the plan to that effect if it gets rented.
Make a motion we grant the waiver for the portion of this property that is west of the soil division line.
For the reason?
For the reason that that property is not intended to be used.
Developed or used?
Developed or used.
Is that a valid statement?
I believe so, yes. Yes.
Because if you were planning to use it, no, the board might view this differently.
No, that's why I'm asking for the waiver, because there's no intentions of doing anything with that.
So motion by Lynn?
Second.
Second by Robin. Discussion. And since Chris is out, I'm gonna ask Ellen, you've been acting his place too. What was she? He's coming back. He's coming back.
Wait here.
That's true. Chris, I was just, we just discussed the waiver request number one. I was assigning Ellen the vote on that in advance.
What do we got?
Sorry, people calling crisis, they're gonna... waiver, waiver request to not do wetlands delineation of the back part of the parcel since there couldn't be any development or activity there.
Yeah.
So basically, wetlands delineation on sheet one but not sheet two. Further discussion. Chris could come up with the vote. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed, abstentions. That carries unanimously. The second waiver is, reads this way, I would like to request a waiver of item number nine on the site plan checklist, topography. We are requesting a waiver on the back portion of the subject lot as there will be no new development in that area. So essentially, the same area that we just dealt with with regard to wetlands delineation, you're asking that you, asking not to be required to do topography.
Right.
On that, exactly, yes. So that's the, that's the request.
Make a motion to grant the waiver to not include the topography for the portion of this lot that is west of the soils division line, because that property will not be developed or be considered.
So I could basically take a wetland delineation for the...
Exactly, yes.
Second. Motion by Lynn, second by Phil. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, and that's unanimous as well. So both waivers have been granted, Mr. Green. One thing you'll wanna make sure to do is to include those branded waivers on the plan.
Okay.
When you, when you submit the revision to us.
Just a question, do we wanna go to a more substantial line delineating that area?
This one appears on the map, so, so, as long as that line, Phil, you made it, the line stays on, I think it's pretty, pretty solid. And I, you can use a flat line, or a line could be a lot better, yeah, on the current plan.
Would it be, would it be clearer if on that line, if, that's all, they're reporting?
In the interest of future conflict.
Well, I know where you're going, that's what I'm asking.
I wasn't supposed to cut those trees, yeah? That's all I'm saying. A clear delineated line to just remove any ambiguity for everyone's sake.
Perhaps what we might also do is to say vacant land not to be developed.
At the division line?
Yes.
Some statement that, that land?
Says they're wooded.
On that side?
Right.
Somehow delineated, not for development or use.
Right, right, yeah. I was actually just doing the same thing, thinking that if they're granted, I normally will put a, make sure that the line that's dividing it will say the limit of, and based on the note, which will have the waivers listed.
And where this, is the only soil delineation line on this particular map, we could refer to this, we could refer to this plan as it appears on that plan. Because at the later time, it came along with another soil delineation. I can see where Phil was going with that.
Other questions? Dennis, or Lynn, anything further from you?
I think, okay, most of the microphones are fairly easy to address, so you can just go through them, modify the plan, and respond to the...
Okay. Something the board needs to be thinking about is whether or not, whether or not we want this to come back here, once the revised plan is done, or just begin with, him as part of the commission. So it's something to be thinking about.
I think the only issue, I think that's a great idea, as long as we can somehow clarify the catchphrase in the situation.
And so we can't proceed with the thing two.
Just for clarity, I wasn't suggesting that that's what we're gonna do, I was saying that's something, something that the board would, we're gonna have to make a decision to either continue the hearing or to do something else, so. Yes, there.
Other than that, I wouldn't have an issue with this condition.
Oh, the other, well, the other thing too is that the applicant's gonna be speaking with the partner, and I think it'll be helpful to know what their response is from the board, because they might make some suggestion that it requires some modification to your plan that we'd want to see before.
Okay.
There are probably enough, I'm saying this, that, nothing too major, but probably enough that it would be worth seeing. Okay, we've done jurisdiction, we've done waivers. What are we missing, plan, Dennis?
I'm wanting to continue.
Well, I'll be, no, before that, before that.
I don't think you're missing anything.
Oh, I, just for the record, I want to ask the board, do you want to do a cycle? Isn't there done? Or it's happy enough that they know the cycle, so.
I'm glad to hear that.
I just wanted to know, I don't know what matters, if the proposed signage and the proposed lighting meets the town ordinance?
Yeah, I mean, that sign is definitely not in compliance with the sign ordinance.
It's not?
It's not in compliance with the sign ordinance.
Okay, but, but it is existing, so is it still usable, or is it, or do you have a sign application that has to be met? I mean, I guess those would be the questions I have for them.
Usually, the sign ordinance now says that if the business has expired, they have to take the sign down.
Okay.
Technically, that sign shouldn't even be there.
Yeah, that was, okay. Okay, so then we would have to do a proposed sign, not just a relabeling of the sign?
And?
And maybe it means the requirements, the new sign ordinance is what you're asking me.
And whatever you come up with should be part of the plan, and it's going to, it's gonna require a sign ordinance, a sign permit from the selecting side.
Okay.
Not to say that these existing structures could be part of the use.
Right.
Rip it down and fill it.
They have to take what's there, see if it meets the requirement. If it don't, then we'll make modifications to it or replace it and propose that. Okay.
Go over, also with regard to lighting, you talked about existing lighting on the site.
Yes.
And you talked about the recessed lighting under the overhang, which, even though it's existing, it actually does technically meet the lighting ordinance, which requires fully shielded down, down-positioned lighting, dark sky compliance.
Right.
Okay, so if you were to be adding anything more, any wall packs or any, any other parking lot lighting, first of all, that should show on the plan, but it should also meet the lighting.
Okay.
Look to show where, I think you said there was a light on the sign pole, I wasn't sure if that meant.
It's actually on the utility pole, next to the sign, there is a two-spotlight to face the front of the building, and I will compare those to the signed ordinance, and we will update or remove.
Okay, now those are, those are lights that are, that are shining into the property that way?
Yes, yes, but they are high, because they're on the utility pole, and they're large, so.
And I can...
They're not, they're not working. So I was just told they're not working currently anyway, so that it may just be replaced. When I do it, I do it, and everything that's there, shown.
And I can tell you that they, they, they won't meet the requirements.
Right, right.
So those, and we're, and we're hearing quietly from the butler in the back that they're, that they're in annoyance.
I'm not surprised.
So, probably best to do something with those if you can.
We will know that.
Questions? Okay, so you, you, before I, before I take a motion from the board, you have the comment sheets from both town engineer and town planner?
Yes.
The comments from the board as we had discussion?
Yes.
Comments from the butlers as well. And I know you've been taking notes, and so you should be, you should be in good shape to put something together. You're gonna have a conversation with the party. Perhaps with Glenn about, perhaps, perhaps with Glenn about any marking, perhaps future parking spaces or things like that, for possible future expansion.
So before we take the motion, a lot of them find out it's a good time to have the plans to be...
February 6th. Plans hit by February 6th for the February 16th, uh, 18th meeting.
So we, we should be asking you now, unless you tell us otherwise, we would continue this to the meeting in the next month, which is February 18th.
Right.
But it requires you to have revised plans to us no later than February 6th.
Okay.
Which isn't too far away from now. And you were talking about having lots of other projects going on, so the question to you is, given what you need to do for us?
Yes.
Is that, is that an acceptable time? Is that, is that an acceptable time, reasonable time?
Yes, it is, yes, because this is my priority project right now, because we would like to get this finalized.
And I'm sure the gentleman said.
Right, exactly. So, so yes, it is reasonable, I think we can do that with no problem.
All right, so I would accept a motion then to.
Make a motion, we continue this hearing to February 18th at 6:45, with plans due into the town by Thursday, February 6th.
So the motion by Lynn.
I'll second that.
Second by Peter Kaufman. And before I take the vote, just. This is terrible. Losing, it's just the thought of this voting. Okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second to continue to February 18th. Oh, even though it's at 6:45, we state any continuances to be at the start of the meeting, 6:45, but we've already continued two other applications, so they will appear first on the agenda.
Okay.
You will then be after that, but again, just in case they have requested continuances, you would then move up in the queue. But if you're here at 6:45 and the other two are here, it's going to be a little while.
That was, I usually do, but I happened to speak to Ellen today, and she told me that it looked like there was some continuing, so I might want to be here at 6:45. So I've only once ever didn't show up, and that was the one time that they called me and said, are you coming? My hometown, so, no, I understand totally.
So the motion is to continue the hearing to February 18th, and just by the way, for the butters, this is your notice of that continuance. With plans due in the planning board office no later than February 6th at noon. Further discussion? Favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstentions. So that's unanimous as well.
Very good.
Thank you, and we'll see you on the 18th.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Peter Butter.
I will tell everyone, we have Diamond Dogs Golf Club in addition to the golf club. We have an area building in one library lane that's a bit of an extension. Mr. Parks would like to come in to review his lawn, to make it, he's been very favorable. And Diamond Dogs Golf Club's coming in for the condo review. All of those come in.
Well, make discussion.
February 18th meeting. And we put something else on February 4th for expedited site plan, because a lot of people's lawn is 18, made us both weak.
So that's March?
No, it's expedited, so it can come in early.
All right, so.
So plans in by two, to tell you all these things so we can have them all on the agenda.
Ready for the 18th. Okay. The next item is, we don't need to discuss necessarily, but we wanted to make sure that we had a space on the. Gentlemen, could I ask you to carry the conversation out? Thank you very much. Just to cover our bases with the warrant articles, we've already had hearings on them, we've already moved up to the warrant. There were no citizen petition zoning articles, so Lynn, I believe you have a motion.
I think the motion would waive the reading of the warrant articles, because they've already had the public hearing. And there's no one here tonight to discuss the, which is a big issue.
Second. Motion by Lynn, second by Phil. And as it says here, the full text is available here in the office, so if anybody out there is watching and needs to see the text, they can come to town, I'll see you. Further discussion of the motion? Favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions.
Bless you guys.
Thank you, Dennis. Thank you, Lynn. All right. So under correspondence. I don't need Christmas wrapped in for a while, not for a while. I have one of that up this year. All right, the first, first item is a letter from William Newman, dated the 20th of December last year. Dear planning and or assessors of Town of Kingston, my late wife, gee. This is a handwritten. Mrs. Newman. In parentheses, it says she passed on December 7th, 2019. Have a, had a vision to build a school for 100 children on our property next to our home. The school's purpose is to teach children and adolescents English. After speaking to Chief Don Briggs, advised me to write you this letter. Please advise me of the process to fulfill this vision for my beloved late wife, Gia Z Newman. Thank you, Willie, in parentheses, Will. Okay, and I'm assuming that somebody has talked with our planning office, and they've provided a process for this to happen? Okay. Could the planning office please get in touch with these folks?
We had spoken about this before, previously, about the process, but it's a letter to the board. We would like to plug that school, or just maybe plug that process to it once again.
Okay, because in here, there really isn't enough information for the board to even have a conversation. You probably know, but we don't know what property we're talking about. What zone we're in, and all the rest, so. Is the board comfortable if we ask Lynn and Ellen?
We have something on the board.
Okay, well, now we have something in writing that we need to respond to. If you could do that, that would be great. Next item is a, it's a flyer, did we distribute this out by email?
Yeah, we have.
Okay. The Regional Economic Development Center, over, based in Raymond, but covers most of Rockingham County, and actually part of Hillsborough County, I believe. They actually are the developers and keepers of what's essentially an economic development, kind of a master plan for the region, it's called. It's abbreviated by the acronym SEDS, it stands for Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. They get funding from the Economic Development Administration in Washington to do this planning work, and every five years, they need to do a major rewrite of the plan. And 2020 is that year for this, for our region's plan. And so they, it's a public input process, and so they're doing some visioning sessions. There are four of them, February 4th in Hampton, February 5th in Derry, March 9th in Newmarket, and March 11th in Nashville. So this flyer explains a little bit of the information. I believe that there's, I don't know if there's a way to register by going here, or you just show up to them, but anyway.
I think they did, I think they did want.
Oh, our website, there we go, got the website. So if folks need a copy of this, we can make hard copies, otherwise we can get it out by email. It is, it is. And just so you know, the reason, the part of the reason that it's important is that because the Economic Development Administration is funding the planning work, they are also the source of public infrastructure money for some of these projects, so if you think about some of the work that was done at the intersection of 125 and 101 in Epping, some of the expansion of that road network, and the upgrade of the public infrastructure, water and sewer and so forth, was in a significant way funded by, funded by the feds through EDA, and that project was identified as part of the SEDS process, so being in the plan often makes you eligible for some funding that you can be able to.
Are they responsible for the timing of the lights?
Yeah. All right, the next item in the packet is a decision letter from the zoning board of adjustment on Camp Lincoln. Do you want me to read this? Well, I haven't read it yet, so I don't know.
They overturned the plan.
Okay, in part.
Well.
Specifically, they overturned it, but.
Actually, this plan is powered, these last three characters are needed.
All right. And this decision letter was addressed to Camp Lincoln with copies to building inspector, town clerk, town assessor, and the planning board. So the end of the letter reads this way, "A detailed drawing of the camp facilities that designate the type of buildings, their reported use, and their location on the site will be made available annually to the planning board, building inspector, and the fire department." That paragraph ties in with one at the end of this first page. Prior to the opening in April, the camp's executive director and or board of directors will arrange for the Kingston Fire Department to come up, to come in to inspect the facilities to ensure that the cabins and other buildings are up to code as appropriate. And then a detailed drawing of camp facilities that designate the type of buildings, their reported use, and their location on the site will be made available annually to the planning board, building inspector, and fire department. While prevailing law allows some expansion of the prevailing non-conforming use, it must reflect the same nature and purpose, it must not be different in character, nature, or kind, and it must not have a substantially different effect on the neighborhood. To this end, camp activities, including occasional overnight camping, is allowed. Concerts, weddings, or recreational activities such as an ATV center are not considered traditional camp activities and are not consistent with the established non-conforming use. Variance relief would be necessary for that activity to be allowed on the property. So apparently, the ZDA has determined that overnight camping, you don't need to use that, as long as you speak clearly.
And if you want, I can mail this out to everybody, and we can talk about it February 18th. And we will just read the whole.
Right, and it's basically, the only thing it overturned. I recuse myself in this decision of, on our decision.
It was a challenge, a chip landing course decision, which I voted on, so, but the,
they upheld the idea that they could continue youth camping, Girl Scouts or Camp Lincoln or whatever, and that they could spend their overnights camping there, but said all the other activities. It held the six. So it required, I'm going to put them. They did mention to them again that the, that the selectmen have an event process that they could use. They want to have time going to the system.
So we'll get copies of that out to board members, and we'll be forward to chat about it on February 4th. There are letters here addressed to each of us, they're all sealed, and they're stamped even, delivered to the planning board office to each of us, so. Okay, so some concerned folks in the Seacoast area are alerting us to some legislative bills that are in works. So this is informational for each of us. I'm not going to read this, you're welcome to read your own personal copy of your letter. And the last item in the correspondence folder is dated December 17, 2019, from Sandra Chiardo, treasurer of Kings Landing Condo Association, 7 Monarch Way in Kingston. Kings Landing Annual Age Census. It's addressed to Ellen at the planning board, and it says, "I am writing to the Town of Kingston Planning Board to comply with the requirements of Article 208.05, Market Rate Elderly Housing. I declare that as of December 1, 2019, 44 homes are occupied at Kings Landing Condominium Association, 22 Marshall Road, Kingston, New Hampshire. All occupants have provided a signed affidavit and photo identification, which verifies that they are at least 55 years of age. Please let me know if you require further documentation. Best regards, Sandra Chiardo, Treasurer, Kings Landing Association." Wow.
Yeah, I know. Boy, really.
We so seldom get information that.
Unsolicited.
That we're supposed to get, that it's unusual, and we do get it.
Isn't that supposed to go to the.
We'll make sure, yeah, and we'll put a copy in here on our folder as well. Is that in the envelope?
No. Hundred percent.
Hundred percent. Well, if folks from Kings Landing are listening, thank you very much for complying with that and for sending that in. Much appreciated. We need to deal with minutes from December 3rd and the December 10th.
No, December 3rd.
No, this was posted before we canceled, so December 3rd.
Okay, so. So there are no December 3rd. So December 10th.
And I'll move that we accept the December 10th as written.
Motion by Peter Kaufman. I'll second it. Further discussion?
Just two things. On page six.
I spelled your name wrong again.
No. Six, seven, eight lines up. The word on that sentence, last word in that sentence should be not no, but not. And then on the next page.
I'm assuming N-O-T.
N-O-T. Not K-N-O-T, that's correct.
Not not.
Not not. Okay, we're getting a little. Okay, and then on page seven, and the paragraph that starts M-M-N-S. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten lines down. That doesn't, that, the end of that phrase does not make sense. Oh, handout, it should be handout, so the had should be had. Oh, goodness, okay. That's all I can, thank you. Please.
And so we had a motion.
And, yeah, motion and all related to the amendment to motion.
So the motion is now to accept December 10 minutes as amended. Was there a second? Oh, I seconded.
Yeah. You're alright today?
I didn't, no. Clearly not.
You didn't remember.
Discussion, I did a venture. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstentions? One abstention, Chris. So that motion carries. Is there any other business?
Yes. This is quick, it's just to confirm that Mr. Mines did, I think I already told you that it's a full, the ones already reviewed it with his requirements, so we just want to make sure for a moment, and that we're going to add to our February 18th hearing night, Diamond Dogs Golf Club addition, Inverarian Holding and One Library Lane there expansion, Mr. Parks request to review his bond amounts, and Diamond Dogs Golf Club for condominium. So there will be one, two, four more items added to February 18th agenda.
They clumped already. I looked at all of them last week to make sure that they were completed up for, for what they are.
And that's, that's added to the three that we've just continued from tonight, so.
And technically, one of them's two. It's not one with just the.
Well, I, I was, I was rolling that together. I know, technically, yes. So it looks like we have seven.
We have a very busy.
Seven hearings that day.
One, two, three, four, oh, no, I'm sorry, did I end that wrong?
Although, without, without saying, you know, the kiss of death, you should be dispelling of two of them pretty quickly, so.
We'll see.
I know.
Says it all well.
Just, just curious, when people request to come before the week, they always request at your next available meeting. Well, isn't it possible to have a full meeting, we can send them to the next one? Because where will you have a cap? We would have twelve items next. Well, I can, I can tell you that, that many boards will set a time limit for the meeting, for instance, that once it reaches ten o'clock, they stop wherever they are, and it's stated that way on the, on the notices. And what happens is that, that people are put onto the agenda, but they know that if they, if, if the board reaches the, the time cutoff, that they're automatically gonna continue to the next one.
I guess what I'm, what I'm saying is, you know, some of those crazy, we, we had, I feel that some of the applicants that want to come before this board and have a lot of time, money, effort involved in these projects, now eleven, eleven-thirty at night, we're not gonna sit here and give them the attention they deserve. So all I'm saying is, I mean, we, you know, we're saying that, we have seven there, that's fine, but I mean, is there a cap? To sit at one o'clock in the morning and have these people sit here from quarter to seven until midnight, we're not gonna give them the atten, attention.
Is there any way that you could, I don't know, let them tell us the legality of the reason, take, and I'm not the one who, when they apply to us.
Correct.
But whether or not you could put some of them to March 3rd, I'm not saying you have to move them necessarily a, a full month away, but could you move them to March 3rd?
Absolutely. I, 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 that's, that's what I'm getting at, because again, again, they all ask to come before this board at our next available meeting. So the next available meeting, which is February, has a full agenda, then we say our next available meeting would be March 3rd, that simple. Instead of stacking them all up, just, I just, I just feel like the applicant is not getting their, a correct service by us, and, you know, we're tied, they're tied, we're all sitting here looking at each other, I'm just curious how that would work.
Well, you, you, I mean, you're absolutely right, and, and that's the reason that many boards do establish a cutoff, because, because, you know, after three or four hours of sitting here, we're not very effective at that level, that's what I'm, my thoughts, if you look at that.
Do you want to do that?
Some of these people now are expecting to come, I think, next month, it might be a little early, well, have they already been told?
The only ones that have been given a time and date cert so far are the ones that we need to.
Maybe, and that'd be, we'd have to have them come, and then a couple of the other ones possibly send them to the third or March.
Well, I mean, that's insane, you could split your, you could split your agenda, Diamond Dogs Golf Club addition and condos, we could put them in on the same date, so that you, you know, you're not splitting them up.
Yeah, correct.
Put that to March.
Yeah, you put them on March 1st, because you're gonna have thousand line adjustments subdivision, Mr. President, and automation, now, you could put one more in if you wanted to, and then move the utmost to March 3rd.
Or just move all those new ones to March 3rd.
I'd leave that to the board.
Yeah, that's, I think that's a very good.
Because, because a couple of these that we've continued are gonna end up being a significant discussion.
Yeah, it's not fair, cut them short and kick them off, because we have other people behind you, so it just keeps going on and going on and going.
So does one want Diamond Dogs Golf Club and their addition and their condos on, and then Inverarian Holding and Mr. Parks all on the March 3rd meeting?
Agreed. Is there any reason that Glenn or Ellen, that you can think of, that by putting in, putting those to two weeks beyond, is gonna, is gonna be a hardship for them anyway?
None of them are doing anything.
Or in the middle of the winter, so.
Well, just asking.
It's to everyone, they're, they understand.
Just don't wanna be pushing somebody off if, if it's gonna be critical.
Although, my kiss of death. Okay, are, are we on?
Yeah, we are. Okay, we've said enough.
Yeah.
So that's a motion, Peter.
It, it was, it was a motion.
Or is there a second?
That's a second, right.
Alright. That is to.
What our.
Put the new applications that we've received.
Which are.
With an added hearing on March 3rd, and we're gonna move the new applications received for our next upper caring for that day.
Motion by Peter, second by Phil. Discussion. In favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstentions? Okay, that's you. We're gonna have public yeses.
So, we're sitting by zoning board, and some of these discussions last an hour or more, so we went and they said that if they're talking at nine o'clock on an application, an open application before nine o'clock, anything, any other application after that is gonna be continued. And also, that discussion on that application, nine o'clock, it extends to ten o'clock, and it looks like it's gonna go beyond, they stop at a ten o'clock, so that the board at ten o'clock, you're not gonna be functioning, so they said, that's, that's the process that they go by, and just to let you know that that's an option for the future, to get multiple applications, and, and the board is gonna have multiple applications that are gonna take a long time in the future.
I think people in our office, including you, and.
Yeah.
I think when we get these applications in, we can filter through time re, time restrictions, people that have to be shuffled around and maybe be heard first, is that sixty-five day, things that we have to take care of, we have to take care of, but the thing that they're looking for the next available meeting, is the next available meeting, because it's, it just gets, keeps piling, and just, I just don't think we have to bear that.
We're breaking up two weeks. Much better than the way.
Yeah, yeah.
No reason why we can't have hearings on the all time.
Let's, I wouldn't recommend the board do it just arbitrarily, but if you have eight things in one hearing, then it's time to split it in two.
Right.
Even five sometimes for us when they're really involved.
Yeah.
Set a ton. Yeah, I like the idea of us, I mean, I don't think we have to set it for me, but I think we ought to look and set that time limit, because it is easier for us to be more effective if we know that they, that we know exactly when this is when we stop, so we need to be engaged during that.
And maybe the time to do that and discuss that is at our first meeting after elections, so that the new board coming in has the choice of how to proceed, rather than us doing it for, and that might be changed. Have to participate in one.
And I can tell you from my own personal experience, the other two towns that I, that I've worked with, funding area, and both of them do have time cutoffs.
They do.
Oh, yeah.
I think that's.
And especially where we start at six forty-five, it's, it's a good block of time.
But. I think there's lots of, of ideas for the day. Because the board, I mean, I wish you were paying attention that much, I mean, it's not like we guys were already tied and looking worse for next.
Trying, trying. Trying, working on it. Alright, any, any other business?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Alright, and we are adjourned at eight fifty.